Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to item number two, amendments to the agenda. I always like to take my look left and right. I did not see anything, otherwise this agenda will stand as distributed. Item number three, we're going to look to approve the minutes of the September ninth, 2025 Three Rivers-Scott County Joint Board Meeting Minutes, as well as the September sixteenth, 2025 Board Meeting Minutes. Are there any changes or additions?
Mr. Traveler, approval?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved as distributed. Item number four, one of my favorite spots on the agenda that I wish more people would take advantage of, recognition of interested citizens. This gives anyone an opportunity to talk to the board about anything that is not on the agenda, limiting five minutes per person or subject. So if you, if you, I think we may have a few folks, please make your way to the microphone right up here to this podium. You want, there it went green, so name and address for the record and welcome.
Thank you, my name is-
By the way, housekeeping, that microphone will get you, so you don't have to sit down to it.
Sounds good.
I know it's a little distant.
Yeah, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, my name is Aaron Sanders. You need-
Just an address.
Okay, an address, one three nine four Wood Duck Trail. County Board, I just want to thank you for hearing our concerns. I want to talk about two items regarding the proposed road between Why Not Acres and Timber Trails. The two items are the comments from the open house and the consequence of this road being installed. At the open house, we found out that they are closing the crossings on any new development with the designs of expansion going down Marshall. This includes Marsha Road and Norton Drive. The idea is to limit crossing, so you can only turn one way, you cannot travel north. And they say that's for safety and for effectiveness of traveling on Marshall Road. This, I want to be crystal clear, we oppose this road. So everything you're going to hear from me is in opposition of this road. Jennifer Lane, the head engineer bragged about how good a job Scott County did with this. They did a nice job, but it wasn't driven by Scott County, it was driven by the developers. The reason that went in was because of two of the three ten acre lots were purchased, and then they worked with the county to actually put Jennifer Lane in. Jennifer, Jennifer Lane wasn't purchased by Scott County, put the road in, and then the roads were developed. It was done because of development. The road we're talking about is typically done because of that reason. It's not done because they want something. I understand needs, but there's a want is driven by development, not because the county wants it. Here's the most telling story for me at the open house. I went to three engineers. I asked the three engineers this one question. If every house at Why Not Acres and every house from Timber Trails to Jennifer Lanes, over 200 homes on both sides of the road, if they all came to you individually and said, "We do not want this road," what would you say to that? One said, "I don't know." The other said, "I feel like you're trying to trap me." The third, the lead engineer responded, "I can't comment on that." That tells me that the engineers are set up to not have a plan for opposition. I know what they are doing is always asking for things from homeowners. But at a certain point, there's got to be a plan for opposition, and I don't see that when we're there. I really feel like it was a waste of time, to be honest with you, going to that. The 2009 comprehensive plan, we keep hearing the reason this road needs to go in because it was proposed in the 2009 comprehensive plan. Why wasn't it done 10 years ago then? 10 years ago, they redid Marshall, they, it would have been a lot simpler then. Why wasn't it done then? And more important, why is it not on their, their plan right now? If this road is so important, they've had 15 years to think about this, and this road is just added after the third meeting, second or third meeting. They're not planning, they're reacting. At a city council Shakopee meeting, the lead engineer stood up and said to the council, "You should expect 10 cars per day." What we found at the open house is how they plan, they plan 10 trips per household per day. If these are the facts, this road is going in for one house. It just doesn't make sense. It just, I, I can't understand the facts that we are being told about, all the turmoil, all the expense for one 10 daily trip. I could not get the engineers to actually tell me how much traffic they expected, but the city engineer did. The city engineer said that we planned for half of the trips to go on that road. Well, there's 40 homes, that means there's 400 trips, that means they're planning for 200 trips per day. My second point on this whole thing is, is there's a consequence to this road. The county engineers are breaking every single rule by putting this road in. Here they go down to, to Marsha Drive into Norton Drive and say, "You can't cross there." But we're 100% okay with dumping up to 200 people a day, and let's let you cross at a busier intersection at Wood Duck and Marshall. It's going against everything they design about. I guess, again, I just don't quite understand why they're doing that. In closing, I feel the board has a say in this. And what I want to say is, is that I feel the, the engineers are reacting on this road, they're not planning. They've had 15 years to get this down. They've had two major remodels, they've done one, they're proposing another, and they were not included in it in their initial plan. I feel that they are reacting to this, they're not planning for this. So my ask is that you say no to this road. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Yes, please. Come on up, state your name and address for the record, welcome, good morning.
Good morning, thank you. My name is Jeff Bolt, I live on 1401 here in Court. I'm one of the property owners that'll be affected by this taking if this road is, proposed road is sent through. I've got a lot of history on that property. Give me a second. My great grandfather bought it in 1906. Went through three generations of family farms with my grandfather and my parents. One of seven raised on that property. We grew up in acreage with the woods and a lake, country living. Then at late 90s, my folks were in their late 70s and thought it was time to downsize. None of the family members felt they could purchase the whole acreage, but we decided to keep 10 acres, which was the minimum requirement at that time from ag to rural residential. So, once we got it surveyed, we found out that the line of 10 acres went right through the middle of the barn that my great grandf, grandfather built in 32, so we moved the line over to 11 and a half acres. My first interaction with the city was they pushed back on letting us rezone it, because I was in the meeting, told by a city councilman that we were slicing and dicing the remaining acreage in, in Shakopee, even though Timber Trails and Wood Duck had one, two, three acre lots, didn't make any sense. Through that meeting, it was approved, and that was after we had to hire lawyers to push this through, which didn't make any sense, because we followed the city ordinances. And then the person who pushed back in city council after approval came up to me and asked to buy 10 acres of the property. That was very offensive, based on he was pushing back at the whole idea of slicing and dicing. And I'll backtrack, three times my parents had land taken up to one and three quarter acres in the 70s and 80s by roads being widened on 17 and 42, so our family went through condemnations three times. As they sold the rest of the property to Brian and Julie Welch, one of the reasons my folks sold it to them is they promised not to develop it. That was a pretty big deal. So, they honored that as well. And the whole thing about the comprehensive plan that Aaron talked about changing, things change. Because, if I understood correctly, there was five acres, 2405 Jennifer Lane that was recently sold. One of our neighbors in Wynette told me, a family member went to the city council asking about a building permit to put a single family home on there. And they said, "No, it needs to be sold to developer for multiple houses." So again, slicing and dicing, who's doing it? Things change. So we're asking for this comprehensive plan to change to, if and when the Bolts and Welch's develop, this is where the road needs to go, which I heard 10 years ago. So I don't understand the push to pay, have taxpayer dollars to pay for this road that nobody wants. And if maybe one or two people, the vast majority does not want. When we built our house, and this is another issue with our local government, we have an 11 and a half acre lot with thousands of trees on it. Somebody from the city came out and counted stumps when I cleared trees for a house. Had to put 24 trees on the property, which, other than putting them in the tillable ground, didn't have much space to put them, but we found spaces, had to put money in escrow in case any of them died. That was money we were going to use to build our house. And double standards come into play when the county blasted a hole in our northern lot line to give us a driveway we didn't want, because they condemned our Marshall Road driveway, which was safer than the Wood Duck entrance to Marshall Road, by the way. Nobody counted stumps and nobody replaced trees. So as a taxpayer, I get blasted, the city and county can do what they want. And I, that sits very poorly with me. In 2014, the Welch's were contacted by Randy Running in January 2014 about that 2015 project. And he commented to her, "I need to contact the Bolts." Seven weeks later, he contacted me, and then commented, "We need to get moving, we don't want to delay the project, you need to get a meeting set with me so we can talk about your driveway." 2025, similar thing happened. Three weeks after the Welch's were contacted, we were contacted about this, which was 10 days after the county presented it to the city. We weren't even notified yet. There's no transparency, it's, in my opinion, incompetence or deception, but it's not fair. Another taking is on the horizon, and we went through it in 2014. We were treated rudely, with disrespect. We weren't given a fair price for our property or our buildings to be moved. And it took a year and a half after they were moved to get compensated somewhat fairly, which, we were able to pay loans back, but not able to replace all the buildings. And another comment from the city, once I went with plans to put up a new pole barn, said I couldn't build a metal building on this property, even though I took one down. I had a year to do that, replace it, wasn't informed of that. And then he told me, after looking at the plans, if I put wood siding on it and lowered it by one inch, one inch, I could build it. Where's the common sense in that? It was, it was a very disrespectful comment about, how about wood siding, let her fly? Instead, it's another interaction with the local government that was negative. They took .46 acres in 2015. We fought Randy Running and the county day and night, and he was disrespectful the whole time. I don't see, or have any reason to believe, we're not in for the same fight. Our property's not for sale. We have a secluded lot that my wife and I are blessed to have. But local government continues to nick away at it, taking away seclusion, security, and safety. And it's not acceptable, so I truly want you to reconsider the 2009 comprehensive plan. Put it on the back burner if and when developed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to take advantage of the interested citizens? Thank you, yes, please. Name and address for the record, please, good morning.
Good morning, Julie Welch, 1525 29th Avenue. Jeff and I are the parties that would have property taken from us if this connection road is going through. I'll be brief, I just want to say that we've already had property taken three different times for a total of 10 acres or more. I think that's more than enough sacrifice for this county. And another taking, you know, it's probably another acre and a half, something like that. The bottom line is, anyone that we have talked to, to the north and to the south, does not want the connection road. They do not want their neighborhoods connected. They like them the way it is, they like the serene rural feel, just as Jeff and I do. We do not want traffic through our properties where we enjoy wildlife and solitude. And so, again, we are respectfully asking that this connection road not happen unless such a time as the properties are developed, and a, a road would be developer driven. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in this full room like to address the board for any reason not on the agenda? Not seeing anyone outside, thank you so much for taking advantage of this opportunity. So we will now move on to item number five on the agenda, recognition of Scott County retiree Pete Chutrup. Who's going to take that away? Good morning.
Morning. Pete Bus, Highway Operations Supervisor. Here to recognize Pete as retirement. Pete started his career at Scott County Highway Department on December 21st, 1998. He was hired by Joe Kane. Pete quickly became a strong member of the Highway Department family. His initiation to the 98, 99 plow season, with plowable accumulation starting the day before he started, including a snow event on his first day. A lot has changed in the county over nearly 27-year tenure of our team. The county population was 82,000 to more than 157,000 today. The 356 square land miles now encompasses almost 400 miles of road, including 10 major roadways and many arteries, including those partnered with cities, townships, and towns. We are proud to have Pete on our team as this growth and expansion has continued to restore, rebuild, and maintain our road system. Though we are a quiet team, there's a lot of pride in our work. And Pete has become a key player in, in that positive culture. Scott County has a reputation of beauty, well-maintained roads, and proactive maintenance. Pete's snow event route is County Road Part of 16, Part of 27, 1844, and 42. That encompasses 107 miles of plowable road surface. One of the heaviest traffic routes to maintain, including a team of four drivers. As a popular and highly traveled entry point to Scott County for many travelers and commuters, it was always be a key route during inclement weather and storm. This being said, it is not uncommon to receive comments, calls from the traveling public complimenting the transition from other counties into Scott, and, and the excellent road maintenance even in the worst road conditions. Pete's experience and personal commitment set an example for this key team. Reaching that reputation oftentimes was guided by Pete's two primary passions supporting the team. Training others to carry on tradition of beautification with the guidance and snow plow trainees, summer help rotation, job site traffic control protocols. Secondly, Pete has the talent for leading our team in agriculture spraying and inspection as a multi-year certified tree inspector. Pete meticulously attentioned to our county lot maintenance management, created a well-kept, pleasing county-owned lots. He volunteered to look, to represent our Local 49 as a union steward, as well as be an internal point of reference for the Highway Department insurance-related changes. As a longtime resident of Scott County, Pete is a reliable and public-focused guy. He is respected and will be missed as a leader, hard worker, and a friend to many. We will miss his morning snacks, his work ethic, and everyday companionship as he makes his well-deserved transition into retirement. We thank him for his commitment, late-night call-out responses, and sometimes very long hours. Pete, you have served the county well, and we all wish you well. And I enjoyed working alongside you for 26 of those 27 years. Thank you.
Come on up, you can't stay hidden in there.
So before he speaks, though, I want to add a couple words. My, got my black book out for Pete.
Oh boy, here we go. Could be good, could be bad, we'll find out.
I think only when I look out here that Doug and Pete and Pete are the only ones left in my black book. I know, it's a little concerning. But when he was asked about the responsibilities of his position was question number one when I tried to meet everybody in public works in '02. He talked about wanting to utilize the strengths of the department and working together as a team. He did not like repairing chainsaws, he didn't think that was an area he wanted to focus in, but he wanted to focus on wetlands and trees, and how could he coordinate more with the agricultural inspector? Question two is, what were some of the priorities that he wanted to talk about? And when he talked about it, he hit on the same topic again. Working together more with the division and communicating more between the departments and the public works so that they could do a better job. He didn't like to see division between the two sides of the building, which I think there was at one point quite a bit of, and he wanted to help be that problem solver. Again, he wanted to reach out to the ag inspector and work more on trees and weeds within the county and use his expertise. He didn't have a lot to say about what communication worked best for him, but when he talked about three to five years, he talked again about, he'd really like to see disciplined approaches to how they attacked problems. He talked about frost patrol and, and doing some things on the gravel roads. He also talked about re-graveling and be able, being able to work on that. But he also talked about the Labor Management Committee, and he was part of the mailbox solution and moving that forward, you know, which ended up being a award-winning process between two parts of the county. And then in conclusion, when he said, "What did he really want to do?", he came right back to strengths of each other and working together. And I think, Pete, that that really is a symbol of what, when I think of you and the 23 years now that I've been here working with you and watching, it was how could we work together, how could we do better? But what I have here quoted, "You're here to serve the public and the residents. They're our customers, and our job is to be more efficient to them." I just think that was outstanding, and I, I have it here highlighted and actually put little quote marks around it. So, thank you for your years of service and your commitment to what your words said.
Nice. Awesome.
Before Pete, yeah-
We're going to let you linger just a little bit more.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On behalf of the board, Pete, I, I, we agree with everything the other Pete said and, and keeping the roads perfect and, and taking care of our trees and weeds and all that. But I'll tell you one thing that I most appreciate about you, Pete, is you've been a real ambassador for Scott County and connecting people to the things they need. In my, whatever, nine years here, and before that even, you wouldn't believe how many people about any subject related to the county said, "I talked to Pete Chutrup, and he told me who to call or what to do." So thank you, I think that's just a tremendous role that all of us should do. I mean, we are that liaison to the residents, and we should be trying to solve problems and make things better. So thank you for doing that and for that leadership, and don't forget to introduce the fine folks you have with you today.
Nice, nice.
Thank you.
Oh, you.
Oh, me. Thank you for the county being, giving me the opportunity to actually make a career here. I started this, well, I attempted the job a few years prior to that, but it took a few applications before we got in here. But I mainly went to this side of the town because of family. I had two young kids at the time. I used to work on the other side of the cities. I'd drive an hour to work every day, drive a truck for 10 to 12 hours, and then come home another hour later. It, it was a job, it paid well, but wasn't, wasn't my passion.
With that, since I've announced that I was, actually, I told management about four years ago, prepare, I'm leaving in 2025, and I am. And the guys have all been giving me the berries about, "You can't retire." Well, now they're to the point where, yes, they're accepted it, and now they're wondering what I'm going to do with myself. But I'm like, I got a honey-do list, miles along, we'll be fine. It was a great place to develop a career. I enjoyed working here. I enjoyed working, all of you. And the communication thing we're working on, there's still room to work on it more. And it's not just here. I see it everywhere that, you know, everybody's got to talk to each other. And yes, I do enjoy having a conversation with residents and sharing my knowledge and what I can help with and point them in the right direction if they need help. Thank you. I enjoyed working here.
Thank you.
You have to get a picture with the board here, too.
All right. He's like, "Do I have to?" I know, I know. Thanks. I'll enjoy retirement.
All right, we've got a hot mic up here if anyone else would like to chit-chat. See Joe making his way up here. It's green already, waiting for you.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So just, I don't know if I can say much more than it's already been said. Pete Buss did a really nice job putting that together, the comments by Leslie, but I just want to reiterate the team culture. This is by far the best team I've worked with in my career, thirty-one-year career. Worked for a few other cities and landed here at the county about thirteen years ago. We have truly the best team, whether it's clearing the roads to just hanging out. And Pete was a main contributor to that and bringing that team and that culture together. So I want to just thank him for that and for all he's contributed. I'm not sure if ER is in here or not, but countless hours, after-hours calls I've had with Pete, and I know many situations where Pete has spoken to residents after hours without marking those hours down. So again, want to thank him, hate to lose him, but so happy for him.
Yeah, thank you. It's good. Good morning, Lisa.
Morning, Chair, members of the board. I just want to say that Pete's one of the people that I first encountered from the maintenance side when I came to work at the county, and he always was helping me along the way and all the way to the end. I've appreciated what Pete has brought, making that connection with the design side and the various issues that we have in trying to keep that communication going. I sat with Pete a couple, three years ago in labor management negotiations and really appreciated his perspective, and I know he's put a lot of time in that. And I hope he has a great time in retirement, time to enjoy with his family, and thanks again for all you've done for us.
All right. Anyone want to avail themselves to this hot mic moment before we do a little reconvening of this, or, no, not recess first, recess? I see heads looking. You, me, you, are you going to me? No, I, yeah, I get it, I get it. All right, we're just going to recess for at least fifteen minutes. I know, longer for you guys, but we've got to keep the board. So we're going to recess for fifteen minutes, and there's a little reception just down the hall here. So we're going to briefly recess. We're going to read, go through the consent item. What do we have, twelve items here that we'll pass in one motion? We're going to start with six point one. Adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash one-nine-three, authorizing entering an amendment to the Cannabis and Substance Use Prevention Contract with the Minnesota Department of Health. Six point two, adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash two-one-eight, authorizing final payment to McNamara Contracting, Inc., for the County Highway Two and Cedar Lane Baseline Avenue Roundabout Project. Six point three, adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash two-two-two, approving the rezone of forty acres from A-one Agricultural Preservation District to A-three Agricultural Preservation Density District, a preliminary plat and a final plat of the Anthony Keighley Edition, Anthony Keighley Applicant, and Kerry S. Keighley Trust Property Owner. Six point four, adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash two-two-five, authorizing entering an agreement with Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc., for geographic information systems software. Six point five, adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash two-two-seven, authorizing entering into an agreement with the Minnesota Department of Health for the statewide health improvement program. Six point six, adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash two-two-eight, setting a public hearing for October twenty-first, twenty-two-five at ten a.m. to receive public comment on an on-off sale combined intoxicating liquor license for Tonkin Strength LLC, DBA St. Patrick's Tavern and Restaurant in Cedar Lake Township. Six point seven, adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash two-three-one, authorizing an amendment to the grant agreement with the Metropolitan Council for Tree Planting. Six point eight, adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash two-three-two, authorizing entering an agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc., for design services for the Trunk Highway Thirteen, Two-Eight-Two, and County Highway Seventeen Interchange Project. Six point nine, adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash two-three-three, supporting Demcon HZI Bioenergy LLC's Minnesota Forward Fund application for its anaerobic digester project. Six point ten, adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash two-three-seven, approving an amendment to Scott County Ordinance Number Twenty-eight, Social Host Ordinance. Six point eleven, adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash two-four-zero, authorizing a second contract increase for Ames Construction, Inc., for the Miriam Junction Trail Project. Six point twelve, approved payroll processing of personnel actions. Members that are, those are the twelve items on Consent Agenda. Is there any changes, additions, or would anyone like to?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to adopt the Consent Agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second on those twelve items. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, otherwise all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Consent Agenda passes as distributed. Okay, we're going to move on to item number seven point one, Presentation of the Spirit of Scott 2025 Q2 Recognition Awards. Greg, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners. So I'm Greg Wagner, representing the Spirit of Scott group this morning. So as you know, Spirit of Scott is the year-round program where we recognize our fellow employees who go above and beyond in their duties, either towards other staff or to our county customers. So this morning, we have chosen two nominees from the list of just over twenty from quarter two of 2025. And our group really enjoys to choosing the longer ones for me to read. Our first recipient was Dan Wermer. Dan was nominated by Christian Husky. So Christian wrote, "On Monday, on a Monday at approximately three p.m., a taxpayer approached the assessment window, visibly frustrated and confused about a property boundary issue involving a survey from 1999. She believed her neighbor's fence was encroaching on her property and was seeking interpretation of the survey to support her concern. The tax assessment staff, recognizing they did not have the technical background to interpret the survey document, appropriately referred the taxpayer to Dan for assistance. Dan promptly responded and invited the taxpayer into a conference room to discuss the issue. Over the next hour, he listened attentively and empathetically as the taxpayer explained her concerns, ensuring that she felt heard and understood by actively summarizing her points and asking clarifying questions. Despite the taxpayer's frustration and emotional investment in the situation, Dan remained patient, professional, and supportive through the conversation. Later, as Christian passed the meeting room intermittently, he observed Dan continuing to engage with the taxpayer. At approximately four-thirty, after normal business hours, Dan was still actively involved in the conversation, offering detailed explanations about survey interpretation and appropriate avenues for resolving the property disputes. Even after being prompted about the office closing, Dan stayed with the taxpayer, providing a thorough recap of her next steps and continuing to answer questions. By five-twenty p.m., long after regular closing time, Dan concluded the discussion only after ensuring all of the taxpayer's concerns had been addressed fully. Dan's commitment to public service, his patience, and his ability to communicate clearly and compassionately reflect the high standards of customer service and professionalism. His actions not only helped a taxpayer navigate a difficult and emotional situation, but reinforced trust in our office's dedication to serving the community." So a lot of good words in that one, very thorough explanation, but just shows how Dan went above and beyond in his duties there. The next recipient, Mary K. Door, from Veteran Services, nominated by Cara Madsen. Mary K. is the first face you see as you walk into the Veterans Office. You will also see some colorful Mandela pictures taped on her glass. There's a veteran who visits the office regularly before heading to Veterans Court. When he began his visits to the office, he was very quiet, withdrawn, and did not speak much. One day, he brought a colored picture of a Mandela and gave it to Mary K. She was very thankful and asked if she could display it in the window. He was honored and very touched by this gesture. Over time, he has brought dozens of Mandela pictures, he colors, and she takes turns displaying them all. The smile it brings to his face every time he sees them is priceless, and Mary K. says that he has come out of his shell and is more engaging and happier. The little gesture has brought joy and a purpose to his life. He continues to bring colored pictures, and Mary K. is hoping to find a few Mandela coloring books to purchase for him as he is short on funds to continue his happiness. Delivering what matters is sometimes the simplest gesture of kindness. We felt those were two very appropriate ones to be nominated for quarter two of 2025. So we thank Dan and Mary and everybody that was nominated, and just want to remind the board that this week is Customer Service Appreciation Week. So wanted to thank all of our customer service staff and all county employees who deal with customers, and remind that we do have our event today from eleven till about one. So as you are available, please stop by.
Awesome, thank you so much. And this is, you know, Commissioner Wekman-Brecke, almost said bar, Commissioner Wekman-Brecke, you know, earlier in the retirement, and we have, we do these Spirit of Scott throughout the year, the importance of being ambassadors, doing those extra little things, which so many of our folks do, you know, they really do want to make that difference in someone's life, bring a little bit of hope, bring a little bit of transformation, and who knows how that comes about by something as simple as a coloring item or, you know, walking through survey results and so forth. So it's never minimize, you know, what snowflake is it that really breaks the branch? Is it the first one, or is it the last one? It kind of takes them all. So, yeah, so many of us do such great work, so thank you for highlighting this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, or we will move on to the next item? Moving on to item number eight point one, adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash two-three-nine, approving conducting a closed meeting as authorized by Minnesota Statute thirteen D dot oh-three to discuss labor negotiations strategy on October seventh, 2025, at ten a.m. or soon thereafter. Oh, we're at nine fifty-eight. So doing that at ten a.m. or soon thereafter as the agenda allows in room GCE two-three-one. That is the resolution before us to conduct that closed meeting, but we are at nine fifty-eight. We are really, you know, ahead of time here so far today. So I suppose we could do the vote, right?
Do our reports?
Well, you know what?
Do you have a closed session? We need to wait until exactly ten.
Well, because it's posted that way. So I think that is the correct way. If we're doing ten a.m., we have to wait for that. So it's nine fifty-nine. You want to fire up report first? We'll look down to the right. We've got at least seven reports we're going to hear.
I'm ready. Thank you. It's been a long time since our last meeting. September sixteenth through eighteenth, I was in DC for Minnesota's Transportation Alliance flying. Talked mostly about Highway Thirteen at that meeting and really trying to get our delegation to support a current grant application in by the city of Burnsville, talking about cross-border cooperation, so we can get that project done. Let's get Thirteen done. September nineteenth was Scale Executive Committee, really talking about the legislative agenda. September twenty-second, I met with Carver County Commissioner Fahey and their Carver County Engineer. They're looking at cooperating with Three Rivers Park District in a similar way that we are, and just wondered my opinions, which, you know, I love to give my opinion, so that was a good lunch. September twenty-second was the quarterly meeting with the City of Jordan Mayor Administrator and Councilmember Whips that the county administrator attended with me. And as a result of that meeting, Michael Thompson is going to Jordan City Council meeting next week to talk about assessment and things going on in that department. So love to see our staff getting out to city council meetings. The twenty-third was our county board workshop. Twenty-fourth had Communities Supervision Advisory Committee meeting. Also on the twenty-fourth, Scott-Carver Joint Extension Committee meeting and the Scott County Township Association Fall Meeting. All good things. Twenty-fifth, I met with Chair Beer. I'm sure I had some opinions to tell him, too, but I forget.
A few.
Yeah. Also on the twenty-fifth, we had Tiki Brown, Commissioner of the Department of Children, Youth, and Families, come to Scott County. I think our staff did just a tremendous job at the Family Resource Center and here, talking to the commissioner and her staff about really the big things that we're dealing with and technology modernization as part of that. September twenty-fifth also had NACO Human Services and Education Committee monthly meeting and a meeting with the Mayor of Savage, Christine Kelly. I had, we've been meeting to get together all year. It took us till September, but just kind of a say-hi meeting. September twenty-sixth had the Big Four meeting, which includes the leadership from the counties, the school boards, the cities, and the townships. And those of us who were there who are on scale talked about scale at that meeting, so it was good to share that with others. Twenty-ninth had AMC Executive Committee meeting. Thirty-fifth, I spent some time with one of our residents, talking about disability waiver services. A neat thing happened on the thirtieth is Minnesota Agri-Growth, they do a two-day tour around Minnesota that has, you know, major ag company representatives, some legislators with, and they had their final stop at Rar Malting. So I hopped over there, really talked to several legislators about human services modernization, just had the opportunity to do that, but it was fun to see them, see Rar Malting, learn about it, learn about just the amazing things that that company has done and is doing in our community. September thirtieth, I also attended the County Road Seventeen Open House. October first had Law Library Board meeting, NACO SNAP meeting, and then in the evening, our joint meeting with the City of Shakopee. October second was Scott County Justice Steering Committee meeting. A good meeting, but we have some transitions there where Judge Lennon is not going to be chairing that group anymore, and Judge Colleen King is coming on board and has graciously said she would serve and lead that group. And then also our court administrator, Vicki, is retiring. So it was a last meeting for a couple of really good people. October third had my monthly meeting with our county administrator. Yesterday, CAP Finance Committee monthly meeting and AMC Policy Coordinating Committee. And that is the end of my report.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the twenty-third, met with the administrator, go over a few little topics there. Then after that, the McCall Environmental Center, where there was eighteen and sixteen open house, that actually went pretty good that night. Prior Lake City Council met, everything's good there. The twenty-fourth, Prior Lake Mayor Administrator and the county administrator and a couple of us commissioners met and had a little chat about some things coming up over in Prior Lake. Then that night, we had Township, Scott County Township Association, I think they call. I think the most shocking thing was, oh, there was a lot of people... I think the most shocking thing was out there was a lot of people didn't know that Scott County, 80% of what we do is mandated by the state. So, 20% of what we do, we have control over the rest of it is we must do it, not mayor or whatever. So, then on the 25th, Vermillion River Joint Powers Organization, we had a all-morning tour to see some of the projects we've been working on there. And then after that, we had our monthly meeting. That night, Elko New Market met, and it turned out to be a pretty lively, nearly four-hour meeting. I thought it was going to be about a half an hour. They had some water testing and some of the tests, I think, came back worse or whatever. There was some sludge, and so it turned into a beat-up Niagara night. And so, they're gonna they're actually were gonna they're trying to settle, how much are they going to pay people for the amount of sediment that ended up in some of their filters? And so, other than that, the water wasn't testing any different out there. Just there was when they ran a test, there was some sediment came up, and so they're going to pay for some filters for residents out there. So, that's not the whole thing, but anyhow, it's about what happened. The 30th, the County Road 17 Open House, did not go quite as well as the 18 and 16 Open House, but we heard some of the comments this morning. So, we're going to work on that. And on the first Shakopee City Council came here and met, nice meeting. On the 6th last night, Credit River, had one of their two meetings of the month, and one of the topics was going to be the ditch four, and they actually punted on that. And they're going to have maybe a special meeting or meet on the 20th for that and see what they're going to do with that. And then Cedar Lake met after that and all quiet out there. So, that's my report.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Brennan.
Thank you. September 16, I attended the CAP Agency event that happened at their site on First Avenue in Shakopee and took a tour of the food shelf. September 16 was also the Prior Lake Spring Lake Watershed District Meeting. I had also attended the Shakopee City Council Meeting and had was surprised to see our county attorney there and speaking and being all friendly and talking about what he's doing.
That sounds funny.
So, it's always good to hear.
Yeah.
You were friendly.
That's funny.
September 17 was the Lower Minnesota River Watershed District Meeting. They had a discussion about their 22 audit, 2022 audit that was just completed. It was a negative financial report that was reported by the audit, and so they had a discussion about that.
What groups are I missed that?
Lower Minnesota River Watershed District. September 17, I attended the Senate tour of the Highway 13 project. September 18 was MELSA. September 18, I went to the Scott County Broker Day, and I was able to listen to economic development projects that are happening throughout Scott County and in the cities. So, thank you for to the CDA for putting that on. September 23 was the meeting with Met Council interim Director Deb Barber. September 23 was our board workshop, and I also attended the Mental Health Advisory Council Meeting, and they had a presentation on housing. September 24 through September 26, I went to the MACAC Conference, and MACAC is the Minnesota Association of Community Corrections. It's just always great to hear what's happening in their area and their challenges and that they're facing every day. September 30 was the CAP Students Presentation, Shakopee CAP Students Presentation regarding the Scott County Historical Society. There were five groups of students that presented on the Scott County Historical Society and proving membership and proving people coming in and knowing more about the the historical society. September 30, I went to the Open House at County Road 17 Reconstruction Area. October 1 was the joint workshop with the Shakopee City Council. October 6, yesterday, I attended the AMC District 10 Transportation Discussion with Commissioner Alrick, and I'll let him fill you in on that. September 6 was the AMC Luncheon Presentation on Concrete Ideas for Economic Development. That's it.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Alrick.
All right. On the 16th, I attended the ribbon cutting for CDA. 17th, a TAB meeting. And then the Senate Capital Investment Meeting down in downtown Savage for the project there. The 19th, Scale Executive Committee. The 20th, the Regional Solicitation Policy Working Group. And I think this will be the last time I quote ABRT numbers to you, so bear with me. I think I've beat this horse to death, basically. But, okay, here's why I want to have a ABRT in-depth presentation of before and after. Before, that was a route number, and then it turned into a alphabetic line. So, I'm going to give you one line to give you an example of my concerns. Route 21, one of the most heavily used routes in the metro transit system. I think it's the one that connects Minneapolis and St. Paul along University Avenue. I think that's the one it is.
Because Marshall likes to be.
Okay. I'm sorry, got it wrong. Marshall, okay, good. I'm glad you corrected me. Got it wrong. That's actually the green line that does that, isn't it? Okay. So, okay, that I have wrong, and we got corrected, so good. But here's the here's the what the numbers were. First of all, they were really enthused and raving that they'd reached 8,000 riders a day recently. Well, they spent $75 million to turn it into the B-line. And in '23, when it after main COVID, and it still is a route, it had 8,400 rides, so 400 more rides a day than now after 75 million and and making it the B-line. In the 2019, it had 10,000 riders a day. Now, that's kind of the experience that transit in the whole region has experienced, a dramatic drop of transit and a very slow recovery. So, you can't really fault for that. But but again, you know, I that's why I want to see, you know, okay, maybe the maybe the rider experience is greatly enhanced, maybe it has worked well for the future because of that. I don't know. But see, we're just spending this money and not knowing what's the payoff for, you know, and so far, it's definitely not more riders. It's it's still trying to call back to 10,000, and it's still 400 less than 2023. So, that's why I want a before and after study. And usually, I've had two responses from key Met Council staff and key legislator. One told me, well, that presentation's already been made at the TAB. You must have missed the meeting. Well, then I went to the administrator of the TAB. I said, was that ever made? And she said, no. So, wasn't made. And then a legislator said, well, that's all online. Well, it's not all online. So, you know, we really need to see. In fact, if you do go online and they show the B-line, all it shows is a tremendous mountain uphill, but you look down, it's like four months. It's not doesn't give a historical. So, picture. So, anyhow, that's my that's the last time, okay, on numbers and stuff. But that I.
It's important. Super important.
But 23, Chair Vice Chair Board Workshop, County Road 16 Modernization Project Open House, 24th MVTA Board Meeting. So, I'm on a market analysis subcommittee. There's not much happiness on the board with salaries and staffing levels and other issues. And so, we're going to go at this pretty hard, and there is going to be some changes coming. So, anyhow, and we're MVTA is kind of getting creamed in the region. I mean, yesterday or Monday at AMC, the Transportation Group, which is the Metro AMC members, Mary Liz went after MVTA on salary, which there's no I have no defense. There's no defense for the salary, the high salary. So, but anyhow, change is coming. And so, 29th, TAB Active Solicitation Work Group. There's two things that were kind of troubling in this group. An active transportation is bike, pad, wheelchair. It's that kind of projects. Well, they have a community engagement category, and they have three components of it. And if you score high in all three components of community engagement, it says you guaranteed a project. You're guaranteed a project. You know, one of them is if you seek feedback, if some of the community engagement was actually some of the effort was led by the community, and there's three different measures within the community engagement category. Well, guaranteeing a project on that measure alone is crazy because it doesn't say anything about the merit of the project or how it would score against other projects. So, we kind of fought back against that. I think that probably won't survive. Then there was another attempt to redefine geographic balance. And in the TAB, we've always said, we want to have geographic balance of the dollars so that counties are getting really a fair share, you know? And sometimes we've looked backwards and said, well, X county's worth about 4%. Have we been getting 4% of the money in that county's eyes, you know, the 4%? I don't know what the current percent is, but at one time, it was 4. And we look back, and actually, we consistently done a little better than 4 or sometimes way better than 4. And so, but that's kind of the geographic balance. In fact, it was critical at one point. We were out of the money by a couple of points, and I think it was 282. Was it 282 and?
I think it was nine.
Nine. Out of the money by a couple of points because we didn't do the proper amount of community engagement. We lost community engagement points, and we weren't going to get a project. And I said, wait a minute. Geographic balance has said all these years that every county or region should get a project, and if this is happens, we won't Scott County won't get a project. And so, that carried the day, and we did get a project that we did get that money. So, it was a good thing. Yeah. So, so, did I talk about I'm not sure, did I mention the urban suburban yet? Did I? Okay. This was the next thing. Trying to redefine geographic balance. I maybe went into that a little bit, but yes, I did, obviously. But they wanted to define it redefine it by being urban, suburban, and rural, that not by Scott County or Anoka County or Washington or whatever. And I said, well, you know, that's not really fair because Hennepin County has all three of those.
Yeah, they get everything.
Some other counties, there's other counties that have all three of those. We don't have what you classify as urban. So, you could send all the money into those categories and still ace out other counties. So, that is not going to carry either. So, anyhow, okay, on the first meeting with Leslie Vermillion and Lisa Fries, the joint meeting with Shakopee, and a meeting with Matt Feith and from MVTA, the AMC Transportation Discussion, which I wasn't going to report on in details, but so I'm not actually going to do that today. STA Board Meeting. At STA, I learned that our representative Tapke has been telling STA people and others that he has nothing to do with this desire to wipe out the opt-outs or eliminate the opt-outs, that he has just no no involvement with that. And I was very glad to hear that, which I put it out that it's not actually the case. But that's the end of my report.
All right.
Can I just ask what, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Alrick, that MVTA, how did that how did those salaries get so high? Like, who's the boss?
Well, that the subcommittee, okay, there was a market study done and which I've learned that Luther knew because it was going to affect his salary, that he just delegated it to another top staff and wanted to be separate from it because he knew he was going to be impacted. So, that's one of the things that probably was a flaw starting. And then they then there was some things that were thrown into the market study that like private trucking positions, the MAC Airports Commission, others. And then there's a question of whether what classification number, you know, they, you know, whether you're a 22 or a 24 or a 26, you know, that where you're put in the hierarchy by number was also that's questionable too. So, anyhow, so that's what caused some problems. And so, I don't have much more to say. We haven't met. We're meeting on Wednesday night, and I won't be able to attend the Ram Junction because I have this meeting coming up on Wednesday at Sandumai.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I had a question too with this transit transportation. You know, some of our delegation is bent on no new lanes over the Bloomington Ferry Bridge, not even restriping on their ferry bridge because wants to put that money into transit, which I think the bridge is, did I see 30 years old? Is it yesterday 30 years old? And so, it feels like, I know we've talked about this a little bit in our workshops, but it feels like some of the transit type transportation is, I feel like I want to say hell-bent on continuing the infrastructure of like the 50s, 60s, and 70s of the metropolitan of tomorrow, of the the old things, kind of the old ways, which maybe works in urban, but out in suburban rural, like we have new technologies, not Jetsons. I know we're all going to have flying cars and paperless offices by now, but but the driverless or or shared rides, does that even come up? I know we have weather. I get that. But it just feels like we're just building an old antiquated system when we have infrastructure already in place that you can feed into. Like, does that ever come up in those meetings?
Well, we did a study on 169 that was a MinPass BRT study. And my belief that the best chance to get another lane on 169 was to leverage the idea of MinPass and BRT as part of it. And BRT, you know, and MinPass would use that lane, but that lane would also be open to the general public most of the hours.
Yeah.
There, you know, it's restricted a few hours on the rush hours. And that was going to go from 169 to Highway 55 and into Minneapolis. And so, we completed that study, and that study involved us and Shakopee and Prior Lake brought some money from the old Blue Express. MNDI participated. I think Hennepin County might have participated a little bit, maybe not. I'm not sure.
They didn't participate financially.
Okay. Well, they were there at the meetings. And so, we had a lot of different people all along the corridor. And that's a very long-term vision, very expensive. I mean, it's my belief that even the bridges, not just the Bloomington Ferry Bridge, but all the bridges that cross over 169, I don't know if they if they any of them can accommodate another lane, if they would have to be changed. But anyhow, I think that's uncertain.
Yeah.
So, this but this project will probably be 500 million now or something. I mean, it's it's big dollars.
Oh, yeah, it would be.
And so, the idea that I know it was expressed by a legislator that had the Met Council kept that 8.5% we would have gotten a BRT on 169, and that's just nuts because it needs another lane to do that. You can't do there's bus holders on parts of it, but not the whole thing. And the nice thing about that study was it also directed, if we do any projects on 169, do them to accommodate accommodate a future lane. So, there was one project around the study time that's, you know, it's debatable, whether it influenced the building of it for the future. It was built to the future. I think the study helped influence that because it was right in the same time period. I guess others can debate the other side of that. Leslie challenges me on that point, but anyhow, say more.
No, I was just going to support Commissioner Alrick. I think the study at the time was like almost $300 million to do the infrastructure that was needed. It's only really the Nine Mile Creek Bridge. You see the additional width on that bridge when you go over it that has been built in that time period that would allow for. But I think back to Commissioner Alrick's original point of, is this the time to be building infrastructure for transit into the downtown, right? I mean, during '23, when we advocated even for like the gold line and things, should we wait and see what's going to happen and how people are moving? And what does that look like in the suburban areas versus just the trek into downtown, which seems to be consistent with what we're seeing in the highway BRT? And so, those numbers are down. It doesn't matter if it's the gold line, the red line, the orange line. They aren't faring real well right now.
Right.
So, to me, the highway discussion, even at some point, needs to separate from the transit discussion. You know, what is the need on that core? You know, what is the need on that corridor?
Well, and if I could comment on this, you know, it's not just the COVID and the working-at-home environment that's affected ridership. It's that, it's really the bad press that downtown has gotten, and the safety and law enforcement, and whether it's a safe environment, there's a whole bunch of people that, they maybe used to go downtown a lot, they don't really want to go downtown. I mean, it's changing, unless they fix what's going on down there.
Yeah.
And it's not just Minneapolis. There's a very fascinating article in the Washington Post on just the change in where people want to live and why they want to live there. I think you see it in Wright County. I think you see it in Sherburne. I think you're seeing it in Olmsted. You're seeing it in Blue Earth. There isn't necessarily the push for the traditional downtown living that you saw at one point. And so there's lots going on, and before major investments get made in certain things, we maybe need to take a breath and see how some of this works out.
Yeah. I mean, we're, the data is there, you know. Last thing I don't think any of us want to build is another North Star down one sixty-nine or wherever else where it would have been literally cheaper to buy people cars. Not, and that's not being dramatic.
It, it's not, but remember, that was led by a county, right? A big push from that came from Anoka County to build that out, and it was never completed all the way to a St. Cloud or to some of those points that made it operate differently either. And so, big picture, there's a lot you can say about that line, but clearly, they've been trying to shut it down now for a while, and it is suspended. And so that's a good thing.
Yeah. And whoever, I mean, that, whether it's county, state, you know, cities, whatever, I mean, we need to be talking and looking at these things, that communication about what makes sense, because we have a laundry list of things we would like to try to get done at the legislature, and I really believe that money isn't the issue. There's money if we can fund it and find it and put it in the right spots, right, according to my opinion and some of our opinions. But anyway, so that's just, it just feels like, okay, yeah, we see the data, oh, oh, we got four hundred new riders. It's like, well, in the context, things are still below. So what are we trying to sell? And what are we, I hope we're not buying that. I know we're not buying that.
Well, one more, a couple more, if I could. The future of transit, to me, is going to be autonomous, and it's going to be more go everywhere. It's going to be lower cost, because there's no driver. The autonomous vehicles will be small vans, and they'll pick up multiple people along the way. And in counties like ours, there'll be more east-west kind of transit than there's ever been, and, you know, that's the future. You know, I do want to point out that Charlie Zelli did call the North Star line a brilliant idea, so.
Yeah. Well, and that's where I, I just feel like this is the antiquated, we've got the infrastructure in place, that's not going away, like, so figure out ways to feed into it. But why keep building a dinosaur? I mean, they're cool, dinosaurs are, but not when it comes to, in my opinion, transit and transportation, just keep the infrastructure of sorts, but find new ways to feed it instead of just build, build, build. Anyway, wow, that was a very exciting report. We got lots of interaction on that one, so we probably got a couple viewers out of that one, so thank you for that.
Probably raised some.
Well, I mean, we're just having conversations, right? We shouldn't be worrying about having conversations and where that might land, and hopefully it leads to more conversations. Okay, my report on the sixteenth, let's see, had a landowner meeting regarding seventeen, after our board meeting later that afternoon, on the twenty-third, Chair Vice Chair Board Workshop, the sixteen eighteen open house, as was mentioned, Prior Lake City Hall that evening, the twenty-fourth MMCD, raced back here for the Fish Board Meeting, then that afternoon, our Prior Lake Quarterly, trying to keep those comm lines open, and then the annual township meeting, which, you know, I always, I feel like I'm always saying that for I don't know how many years, and probably will continue to say, like, townships are under pressures. If you're living along, you know, especially one sixty-nine or thirteen, some of these major thoroughfares, townships are under pressure. Let's see here, on the twenty-fifth, met with Commissioner Weckman-Bruckey, and you know what? She did have some opinions to share, so I just want to affirm that was in your report, that yes, there were some opinions, and always good conversation. DYCF, did I get those LMNPs right? I think I did. TE Brown, as was mentioned. There was a, there was a, quite an entourage. There's a lot of people that came in to our Family Resource Center and for the presentation, and they were great about having an audible, because as you, we all know that that's under construction, so we had a kind of a little makeshift AV to try to get our points across. But I mentioned, all right, I, we did introductions, and I, my, oh, that's, that's an IT guy, not probably the IT guy, but that, one of the IT guys. So after the meeting, I'm like, hey, did I hear you said IT? Yep, yep, yep. I said, he kind of stood back like, oh, no, 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 he didn't jump back. I said, I want to give you a big hug. You know, we need you, we love you, there's so many things that we want to change with IT, and we need, we need your assistance with that. So, and I think Tiki got a picture of that, because he said, no, normally, I don't get this. It's a different response. I'm like, well, we need you, we need lots of change, and we want to, you know, we're here to help. Let's see, on the twentieth, we had the seventeen open house, which, yeah, that was a little different than the sixteen eighteen, but I think it was a great opportunity for people to, you know, have their opinions known in a, in a public space, the comic cards. And I know some people feel like, oh, nothing, you know, this is just a bump in the road or a hurdle in the way of getting to the end. But I did remind folks that based on the April meeting, which I know much of their chagrin, probably, open house on seventeen, that some of those changes were a result of the open house. So, you know, I said, hey, we are listening and want to try to find a way that works. On the first, because as was mentioned in our interest to citizens, there's people that have been target, I don't know what the right word is, but have eminent domain on their property multiple times in that corridor, and I get it, that's, that's rough. On the first, I want to make sure I got this right, went down to Elko New Market, I think you were there a little bit, little bit later that day. And then I just said a few words. There were, it was, it was Hope for the Community and Feed the Children, and I know that sounds like a similar name to a different organization, but there was lots of boxes of food with Feed the Children I saw, so different organization, with Niagara Bottling and their Niagara Cares, you know, being a good corporate steward, which I think is one of the things they said. You were probably in the middle of that, the city, the, hey, we want to be a company that is here not only to bottle water, but also to give back to the community. So there was a lot of blue shirts at that particular event, and the Readmobile was there, and I think Ally got in and out. She's not in here without getting any dents in the van, so that was, that was good. That was good. Let's see, later that evening, we held our joint workshop, and I think they had it as their, one of their city council meetings with Shakopee, so they were more official than, so we just need to, it was great to meet. I hope we do that at least annually, and of course, we do our quarterlies with them as well, which I think you had talked about, maybe bringing city council members to that, like some of your other ones do. Might be a nice little, little change. On the sixth, MESB, oh, no, sorry, sorry, ten, yeah, that was, it was Jill from MESB, and then Representative Slash Chee, we'll just call him Slash, like one of those NFL stars that plays all those different, Steer was there, and Leslie was here, Jake was there, and Scott Haas came, talking about how do we, with the armor system was the main reason, but, you know, as we, you know, get time with our people that can make a difference, it kind of, all these other things sort of kind of come out, because I'm like, yeah, we're kind of shotgunning and trying to get a lot of things done, but armor is a, is a big one that we really want your help with. And so he had some really good insight of how to work with not only that particular system, but, you know, some of our other legislative priorities. And he's always been a great host. I think a handful of us were down there for many different things, but there was a little recess in the chamber, and he kind of gave us a little tour around, and it was just, it was just, I appreciate his, definitely his willingness, Chief Steer, Representative Steer, you know, really has an eye on trying to make things better. So I think, oh, let's see, I feel like I have something else here. Oh, had a property walk, that's what it was, also on the sixth, which was yesterday regarding the seventeenth, or seventeenth, Highway seventeen project. I am going to stop there, and you guys can be in our nice bookends when we come back from recess, so it's a nice, nice little cap on that. So we have our commissioner reports. So now I'm going to go back to, because I believe we are well after ten o'clock, go back to eight point one, since we were a little early before the ten AM posted time, and look at adopting resolution number twenty twenty-five dash two three nine, approving, conducting a closed meeting as authorized by Minnesota Statute thirteen D dot oh three to discuss labor negotiations strategy on October seventh, twenty twenty-five, at ten AM, or is due thereafter, which we're now after, as the agenda allows in room GCE dash two three one.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. We will recess for this closed meeting, and we will be back. We are now in recess. I think it's. Okay, we are going to reconvene the October seventh, I don't have the media to say that, but October seventh, twenty twenty-five, Scott County Board of Commissioners meeting after being in a closed session. So we did our, our committee reports. The county administrator has mentioned that she does not have an update, so I will look down to my right. County attorney, any updates or anything we need to be aware of or?
There is not, Mr. Chair.
All right. So moving to item number eleven.
Pushing to adjourn.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second, and before we do, we are going to be meeting after this board meeting for a budget workshop on community design, public records, and internal services, which as this meeting is always open to the public, as is the same with our workshops, always open to the public. So we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion?